Line.
Yes, it's still in the bottom line.
And that bottom line has a cost escalation for for labor?
No.
Okay, that's still, that's got the step functions in there, but not the cola.
Right.
Okay.
I don't really have any other major increases. I don't know if you've had a chance to review and have any questions. Basically, did some cost of living increases on some of my line items. The publications and the computers were the two main ones. You're going to see a lot of decrease in revenues, and that's again, thanks to.
Telephones.
LFO collections, yes. So the victim penalty assessment that was a mandatory fee is no longer being assessed. That's a $500 fee that was mandatory on every judgment and sentence. Fifty-four percent of that $500 was county revenue, the rest went to the state. And that is now no longer being assessed if the defendant is indigent.
I mean, it is a pretty stark decrease in in revenue sources. That's quarter through three quarters of a million dollars. And then all of a sudden, it's down to not even half a million. And the other difference is all made up by general fund.
Yep.
Again, I think we're gonna have to increase our rent. Our rent. You understand what I mean on that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I understand. I'm I'm thinking the summary. Budget line, if I could add one line that says. This is my revenue, same thing, but just the some revenue. On that one page.
On the summary page.
Yeah.
So so I I am curious, this may be a question for Kathy on the bottom, the last line of her revenue charts. And I've seen it before, I think under the prosecutor contributions from active fund. You know, a hundred thousand dollars or so.
I'm not sure what that means.
Well, what that is, is the mental health tax. That's a transfer in. This one is, I believe that's where we put that, the mental health tax. We show it as a trick, we show it as a transfer in from the anytime it's from the general fund. It will say active fund.
So mental health or is that law? You have Law and Justice employees, so I.
As well as a mental health.
As well as mental health, okay.
She is, yeah, she has both.
Okay.
And Law and Justice has, it's in its own fund. It's just like we were talking about the prosecuting attorney. It shows up actually in the finance budget, Law and Justice. Because it has multiple departments, it has clerk. Prosecuting attorney. Law enforcement.
And it allows the finance director to have a little bit more control. Guess.
At least a previous one.
So I I don't know if it's blasphemy or of any use, but. I sometimes would take the the total expenditure like for 2025. And divide that by the FTEs of 23, and I get a number that's like ninety-eight thousand. Something per employee and that. To me is well within what I might expect. You you kind of know as an accountant, you you kind of give a broad brush. You is this look sane or not sane? So to me, that looks like it is a sane number.
Good point. Does the FTE on this French page include your Law and Justice FTEs?
No, it does not.
So that just shot yours.
That makes it even better. No, it doesn't shoot it. It actually says. For example, if I did that division and it came out to be 250,000, now you start scratching your head. And saying, I better find out why. And then you'd come up and say, well, you're actually. Three more FTEs if you didn't take into account, then you divide it out and you find out it's still over 200,000. Well, that's. That's fairly severe.
Just to address the Blake positions as well as prosecutors office did. I had four temporary positions in my office. I do not have anybody in those anymore. Those were good through June. And those positions have been. Eliminated pretty much, neither.
Well, the people have been transitioned, right?
We either put them on full time or they left for other departments, so we don't have any temporary. I have one temporary position right now that's good through twelve to twenty-four, and that's my archive scanning that was the ARPA funds.
How are we doing on the archiving? Are we pretty well caught up?
We're never gonna be done.
Stop producing paperwork.
We're trying really hard.
But we added the juvie to you.
Yeah, now I'm cleaning up all of the juvenile archiving, so.
We went to juvenile archives at one time in the Quansett Head over by the corner of the park, the parking lot.
They were. We have moved everything upstairs in the old jail. It's being stored up there and we have a. Scanner set up in one of our huge storage rooms that we are plowing through.
Is that the one that was split?
Yes.
Okay, and all that paperwork at some point in time that goes boxes and boxes and boxes. What happens to them?
They get put in big shred bins and the shred truck comes out front.
Excellent. So is that room now empty?
No.
So do you still have to go through the digitization of all of those guys? Oh, my God.
Imagine, imagine Drake decision just was horrendous and generating a lot of more paperwork.
We're transferring the the stuff that's in the jail comes down to the big storage room, so that's.
Oh, yeah. So but so upstairs is getting a little leaner?
A little bit, a little less all the time.
Have you considered arson? I mean, I I didn't.
I have permanent records.
I know.
So. I'm looking at the number and again, it's the the one with the FTE with with you at twenty-two or twenty-three, it changes.
I thought we bumped you up last year. Didn't didn't Arn come in with this recommendation for? Was that two or three or? There was a big increase in the number of positions allocated?
We we do. I don't know exactly. I'm not sure. I know at at times during COVID, I was. Very pleased as things slowed down there. She, our clerk said. We're gonna shift some of this effort to doing the digitization, and I thought that was an excellent use of of staff. The digitization, by the way, isn't just scanning, it's categorizing.
Categorizing, yeah, so you can find it again.
And the proofing, because it's, like I said, a permanent record, so we have to make sure before that shred. Truck comes that everything we're giving them is. Going to be good in a hundred years.
What's your failure? Rate on that? Zero.
We have.
The industry would love that, yeah. We make no mistakes.
Oh, I don't say that. Everybody makes mistakes. We catch the mistakes.
So you don't make a mistake.
Let's look at it that way, yeah.
Yeah.
So I did have another question on the support that you give to the courts. We'd had a discussion about court commissioners. And the the court, the judges had said they would eliminate what the three quarter, the part-time court commissioner. In exchange for a judge. And with that exchange, we're assuming. You're already providing support for that court commissioner that would that would not necessitate a full-time. Additional full-time like we did when we added the fifth, because that was a totally new position. And I got your very short cryptic email said, yes, we will need one more. Is it? And but you weren't part of the whole discussion about the transfer or, you know, the elimination of the court position or the commissioner position?
What's happening with the court schedules is. They do have the three-quarter time court commissioner, but they're also using other court commissioners to fill in. They've added courtrooms, so they have virtual courtrooms now where we used to have to man. You know, just our physical courtrooms. Now they've added two virtual courtrooms, so.
That's at the jail and at juvie. And then there's something at the hospital, too, isn't there that?
Hospital is gone. We're doing those onsite now.
Oh, okay.
But there's the jail courtroom, the juvenile courtroom. There's the three courtrooms that we have at the hall. But then there's also two virtual courtrooms that are basically computers set up in an office that they're running a courtroom. Everything's appearing on Zoom and that requires. A clerk, just like if it was a. Judge sitting in the courtroom.
I was at an event on Friday night and Judge Cruiser. Gave the address and she's on the appeals court now, and she was talking about how everything is going. Going to Zoom much greater than ever before, and that was one of the lessons learned through COVID is that it's much more efficient. To do Zoom.
Much more efficient for some.
For some, okay. The clerk's job will never.
Clerk's job doesn't change whether they're on Zoom or they're sitting in front of you.
Yeah. And of course, if the. Just if there's a justification for another judge, it's because cases are up. And, you know, as cases go up. You know, that there's got to be some kind of relationship with the number of clerks that are necessary. In both departments, you know, so.
Takes more than one clerk to support one judge, so. There's a lot.
I know it takes an administrative assistant, too.
Behind the scenes.
Any other questions?
So your total FTE. We have twenty-two here, but you there's how many more from other funding sources?
I have a mental health tax position and a criminal justice position. I don't. I have twenty total. So I don't know if that FT is including some of the temporary positions is what it sounds like.
In that twenty, that includes you. Okay, so that's twenty-one. Someone else out there?
Oh, it's it's my chief deputy.
Okay, so those are the two. Okay. And you're not asking for any more. Today.
It's not time for personnel request.
Oh, okay. The plot thickens. Okay, I get it.
Of course, I'm asking.
We we've asked all of our departments to not ask, not discuss the personnel items until we have that specific workshop.
And yet all we do is ask about positions, isn't it?
And that's on October 11th. But Stacy has a special circumstance, and so she's probably gonna come. On another date. To do her personnel request.
But what's the assumption for the budget here?
The budget does not have any new positions in it. Not until we have a discussion about the personnel request and you basically supported.
So in the best light, then what we're looking at is the best lower bound estimate we have.
Yes.
Okay.
I made no assumptions that you would approve the personnel request.
And you're not in, you're not assuming. Significant revenue increases either, right?
Correct.
Trying to be conservative on that.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking those shredded documents might produce methane gas. We can turn it into money.
Right? Only. Only. Only if you get the methane plant done, so it's a moneymaker. All right.
That all for me? All right.
Apparently, for now, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the narrative, too. That's nice.
Hi, Molly. Good afternoon. It's Molly Martin, District Court Administrator. And Judge In Bowden may be on Zoom. I'm not sure if he is or not.
No, yeah. There we go.
Want me to go ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I don't really have any significant. Requests in the operation budget that I've.
Could you bend the microphone? Thank you.
I don't really have any significant requests in the operation budget I provided here. Besides, I'm gonna have the same IT requests that that the clerk did regarding the. Computers not being reimbursed but from AOC this round. That's, I believe, coming up this coming year is when those were expected to be replaced, so. I'll submit that as an IT request. So most of these are just estimates, you know, maybe some cost of living increases, a few decreases based on on spending. That we've done here in the last few years. The biggest. I want to say ask, but change in our budget is going to be related to professional services and interpreter services. And historically, we've paid all of our court interpreters out of professional services, you know, along with any other professional service we had. But in the last few years, we have been getting reimbursements for. Some interpreter expenses from the administrative office of the courts. So I now have that as a revenue line. And those reimbursements come to us along with the cities, the municipal court expenses. They pay their own interpreters, but AOC submits a lump reimbursement. I I submit data for all of them, and then they give us a certain portion back. That then I have to parse out our portion to, you know, stays with us, but also some goes to the cities. So I have. That's caused some complications in that, in that I have to. Have a separate line for that and it as an expense simply to. Get some of that money back to the cities, even though it's only because there's already a revenue there. As a reimbursement, if that makes sense.
So so the need for more interpretive services, is that an indication the fish are running, the smelter running?
That does make a huge difference, yes.
It does. I mean, it is interesting.
Yes, but really, a lot of my increase here is simply to pass that money back to the cities that we've. We've received as a reimbursement. It's not an actual increase in our interpreter services. I just. That's how we've done that in the budget. So so it reflects that I've asked for, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars there, but really that's. I took a bunch out of professional services, put it into interpreter for our county expenses and also. Have a cushion there in order to reimburse the cities any money that they they may have received as revenue. If there's another way to do that, that'd be great, but. I didn't include a whole lot of revenue increases. But looking at the numbers. The Washington State Patrol's filings of. Traffic infractions has increased dramatically this year. They really dropped off. During COVID, the last few years, numbers had gone down dramatically. And they have bounced back up, and that typically is directly related to any revenue request increases we have. Those two are very.
You break through the COVID barrier in 2025.
I believe they're hiring their their backup staffed where they're supposed to be, so. You know, I don't like to predict revenues as a court. We don't have a whole lot of control over it. But it just looks like we're going to be back up to where 2019 was.
Well, you're the one court level that still gets to. Collect money from individuals.
Yeah, I mean, Blazina has affected us to a certain degree. I mean, it wasn't nearly as much because our criminal fines.
Tickets are tickets, yeah.
Yeah, but there were some legislative changes recently for infractions that did make that a little more complicated, and people do have. More opportunity to ask that those fines be waived. They have to. Actively do that. It's not an automatic thing, though, and it has to be based on needs, so I don't know that that's gonna really. Be affected, especially on on traffic tickets through the state patrol. That isn't that clientele.
So just a question for Kathy, the order from left to right and right to left has changed depending. Twenty twenty-one is the left here, and I think in the other one, it just did. The clerk, and that was right to left.
On on. Can you clarify which page you're looking at?
Probably should. No, okay. The the first page is.
Summer.
Summary page as the twenty twenty-five on the left and the other one's twenty twenty-one. Okay, it's just, that's why I'm flipping back and forth, trying to make sure I'm in the right column.
Yeah, there's there's a funny reason why. When we run, part of these numbers come straight out out of PeopleSoft. And the other part comes out of, I'm seeing in the numbers from Budget Boss. So when they come out of PeopleSoft, they come out in this order. They come out the most recent year. To the, you know.
Most recent in the left is PeopleSoft.
But Budget Boss.
Okay.
Has the opposite. They're two different systems, sorry. But that might be an enhancement that we might want to ask Budget Boss to put. The requested amounts first. Or or I can. Maybe I can change our summary pages.
It's okay. We just, we just have to require that commissioners be able to. Read English and Hebrew, so they can go in either direction.
I just noticed it. Thank you for putting that up to me.
It's, yeah.
That's why those numbers kept dwindling as we go forward.
So. Did you have some more to say or?
No, just waiting for questions.
If I do that magic division I talked about, I haven't done it, but it looks like. You're pushing a hundred and fifty thousand versus ninety-eight thousand on the. On the expenditures, just take the expenditure for twenty twenty-five divided by nineteen. And I did that for. For the for the clerk of the board, Superior Court, and I get. About ninety-eight thousand. Here I get a hundred and fifty thousand, maybe a little bit more. Can you help me understand?
I guess I I'm not sure specifically.
There are other costs involved in here somehow, and I'm trying to figure out where that is.
In us versus the clerks?
Per employee.
Well. We do have three judges in our budget. I don't know if that's what you're speaking of.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Okay, so that's included in.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, we're. Versus Superior Court, and then the clerk's office being separate entities. We're all mixed together here in district court. I believe we may have one employee out of Law and Justice funded. But besides that, it's all.
Yes, you do.
Yeah. Simple answers like that just really helped me a lot to get perspective.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. I'm good. Mr. Weber, you. Okay, well, I do have a question on the fifty-eight cents, but. That's when you know you're good.
Thank you.
I I can, yes. Correct, yes, I didn't include any of that in anything today.
I think this is a pretty, pretty good approach. Looking at these budgets early enough, get some questions cleared. The only. Thing I'd remind Kathy is that. While I can concentrate on something, next month you ask me, well, don't you remember that meeting? No. What meeting? No, I. Of course, this is the first time I've been through it with the county, but. I'm.
Oh, but your mind's just swirling.
Well, I'm. I keep thinking, okay, how's it all gonna add add up? And I know that that's coming. We're just looking at individuals at the.
Yeah.
Departments at the time, but.
It it never adds up until it's too late to do anything about it. All of a sudden, it's a fait accompli.
Yeah. You know, this.
I'm hoping that's not true. I'm hoping that we will have an opportunity to have. To present to you basically a summary budget is where you'll see that.
So but what?
With revenue and expenses.
So if we're as, if we're going to be as tight on the revenue, overall revenues as as we're worried about. We'll get to a point where we have to decide. What is the acceptable reserves that we stand?
Right.
I mean, we have, we have code that says eight percent, eight point four, whatever, one month. We've been running up almost, almost three months.
Correct.
Reserves and as far as the general fund is concerned. And I've I. In previous years, we've actually set that forward.
Yeah, and not only in the general fund, but then as I was doing some of the. Areas that are under my. My department, there's quite a few things that have reserves that we probably have too much reserve. And that we ought to look at. You know, what can we do with some of the reserves that benefits? The citizens in the county.
So generally, when I. I was thinking, this is just a general discussion on. Budgets. Because we have the inability to reach into the pockets of people who. May object but can't. Typically, I would want to. Start a budget year by just saying, how much are we willing to pay for the function that is represented by that department? As a percentage of the entire pot? So how much money should, how much of our effort should go to Law and Justice versus? Something else? How much are we willing to spend on IT this year? In terms of a percentage? And as a rule of. Some, you could say, well, if you spend a hundred percent on IT, you clearly can't do anything else, so that doesn't make any sense, but you know, you're gonna have to spend. Something where is that acceptable? Where's that number, that acceptable number? I imagine at fiber, you 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 folks had to decide. How much you were gonna allocate to. Advertising, just what percentage of your budget you would do with advertising? And. I don't think we can get there from here in this area, but it's always something. To consider how we do a different model. Like, we know we spend about. Seventy-five percent on Law and Justice.
I don't.
Typically, it's been about that, yeah.
Yeah.
Huge, just a huge chunk.
Yeah, I do have a, we do have part of our annual report. There is a, they put by function, the expenditures for your total. And so they have them by the the bars functions.
Yeah.
And so that's available on an annual basis, and it can be broken out by percentage of total.
But the bars functions would be. How much to salaries and how much to supplies and how much for?
No, but that those are accounts.
Okay.
So your bars are general services. There's one for. Law enforcement. So your bars are general services. There's one for um law enforcement. Um, there's another for parks and recreation. It's, it's more functional, and I think that's what you're asking about.
Yeah.
And so there's an annual report that's prepared in those categories. And you could come up with the, we could tell you the percentage historically. And then we can also now the, and in the budget, in Budget Boss, it would have to be an enhancement that I would do. Um, but I think it's possible because everything is in there with bars, numbers. And so it probably could be brought all together in summary fashion to tell you, based upon the budget, this is how much we're budgeting for um judicial or for
Yeah.
Public.
Well, I wouldn't mind seeing that.
Enforcement.
A big pardon?
I wouldn't mind seeing that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a nice, it's a nice chart.
Yeah.
The, the frustrating thing is that if you look back the last couple of years, the revenues are so out of whack because of ARPA. Twenty five million dollars in additional money that's you know, and then that's been, you know, that's got its own little formula that skews what we want, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but it it's good to see it how it's, how it spices out. I was gonna say, I would think law and justice might, percentage might have gone down, but but then again, the money that we send over to public works is kind of, it's a separate budget almost, so.
Well, the, the bars issue, if I understand what you said, it actually kind of smoothes over the thought. Like, I'm thinking here, what goes into law and justice? Well, that, that bars sort of will define that for us. So it, and I I don't think we have to define it, so I'm glad to accept someone else's assessment of what, what goes in there.
We'd love to ask the judge if he had any thoughts. Oops. Well, we have one last section, don't we?
I'm told that the treasurer's office is way overstuffed.
And the shocking part is, we can cut that in half and it would make a dent.
That's a rumor, that's the rumor floating around?
I meant to.
Not correct.
I meant to, the money that's coming in.
Yeah, of course.
They have your I have all this. Yeah, they have, have what you wrote up, they have all the details.
Hello.
Hi.
Are you on? I don't think you're on.
That's right.
Hello.
We, we, we're gonna have to hurry up because my computer will reboot in four hours.
All right.
Should have done it this morning when I did.
How do we start here?
You confess all your sins?
Okay, well, Deborah Gardner, Calts County Treasurer, and um I had turned in uh my Budget Boss information. I don't really have any changes to um my expenditures except for the postage um increased. That increases every year, so I increase that. Um, we do have a lot of revenues that come through the treasurer's fund, so I sent you that information, and if you have any questions on any of this, I can try to answer them.
I could ask you the other way around. Do you have any or, well, maybe it's asking you a question. Uh, do you have any concerns about what's on here? Like, I think I'm okay, but I'm really not feeling comfortable that I've, I've accounted for everything. I need more people. I have too many people. Anything like that?
Um, well, I do have the request for personnel that will be talked about in October.
Okay.
Um, so be- besides the personnel, um some of the, the revenues on here. Um, I think we've talked about this before. The House Bill fourteen ten that adjusted the interest and penalty on personal or on um property taxes.
Yeah.
So that, that um revenue will change a little bit.
Could you refresh me on that, that?
Um, it prior to twenty, two thousand twenty two, the interest was twelve percent a year, which was one percent a month, and the penalty was um eleven percent. Was it eight and three yet? There was two penalties for the year, and then in twenty two, uh, that was twenty one, and then in twenty two, there was no penalty on any, in, on any um delinquent property tax. And then in twenty three, it is now nine percent interest for real property with four units or less. And the um and no, let's see, I can't remember now.
Here it is. Oh, there it is.
But four unit or larger units and personal property still have the twelve percent interest. And there's um no penalty on the real properties with four units or less.
Co- compared to, to how much property tax you collected, the interest and, you know, penalties, did they ever amount to a significant number? And um, most people, most businesses make sure, well, you know, they're gonna pay those taxes. Not everybody, of course, but uh, but it's, it's a fairly small percentage if we like thirty million dollars in taxes.
The um penalties for real and personal property tax, the actual revenues for in twenty one were three hundred and seventy four thousand, and in twenty two was two hundred and thirty two thousand. And so far um through June, it was seventy six thousand.
Well, yeah. Not much considering how many, how many tax.
Right. And interest on real and personal property tax in twenty one was eight hundred and four thousand, and in twenty two was five hundred and eight thousand. And so far, um, and as of June, it was three hundred and twenty eight. So any interest and penalty that was already calculated before this Ha- House Bill went into effect were still, those didn't go away. Those, those years are still on there. It's just any new uh delinquencies.
So on a uh property tax bill, there are all kinds of items on there, of which one item really amounts to the county, right? And then there's the mosquito control district, there's this and that and so forth. If somebody doesn't pay their property taxes, they get assessed the penalties and then interest rate. We talked about, who gets that money of the penalties?
Current expense.
W pardon?
Current expense. The county gets the interest and penalty.
Okay, and how do we deal with the entities that didn't get paid? Uh, so it's some, they, they'll only get what they so if, if on a property, a hundred dollars is owed to special district X. Finally, when that tax gets paid, the special district X gets only a hundred dollars? And only at that time?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, and then if it goes into foreclosure and you know, would we, if it, if a property isn't paid for three years, then we'll do the foreclosure process, and the minimum bid on those properties is any delinquent taxes um and foreclosure fees, which will, the districts would, at that time, would get their funds.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't include the penalties?
The, the interest and penalty still go to the, to the current expense.
Okay. When the foreclosure occurs, uh, so it'll be basically everything you mentioned plus three years worth of penalties and interest rate.
Correct.
It adds up at twelve percent plus the initially.
Or nine percent even, right? It's nine percent now for most.
That's just the initial rate, right? So.
Yeah, it's every, yeah, it would, it continues every year.
So nine percent, I, 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 I thought like if I'm delinquent on, on a property, I'm gonna pay uh twelve percent right off the bat if I'm um late a day, and then for every month I'm late, I pay an additional one percent.
No, it's just one percent a month.
Just one percent a month. Ah, I misunderstood what you said.
But the penalty.
Is it compounded?
It's just charged on whatever the balance is on the first day of the month. Just on the first day of the month, one percent penalty is at, or one percent interest is added.
So it is compounded then?
So. Yeah, because next month they would owe
A hundred and one dollars.
Hundred and one.
Well, the, the interest is only calculated on the base amount.
Only on the base amount.
Okay, so it doesn't compound, okay.
Yeah. And now the penalty, when the penalty's added, it's only added on June first and December first of the year. It's delinquent, so the penalty doesn't keep going year after year. It's just that first year is when the penalties are.
So if I'm delinquent for nine months, I pay nine percent. Do I pay anything else?
You would.
I, I pay a penalty.
Pay a penalty on, if you were delinquent on June first, there's a penalty, and then on December first.
And how much is the penalty?
It's um three percent on June first and eight per, eight percent on, on December first.
See, it's different. The penalty is different from the interest.
That's, yeah, yeah, okay, that, that was a little confusing, so. So at the end of the year, I might owe twenty percent.
Correct.
Okay.
So that was one of the changes, um.
No.
We have our um investment earnings in here, which Kathy and I have talked about it, and we feel like these numbers are low.
On, on which, which part?
This is interest, investment earnings.
Yeah, I was, I, I noticed that flipping through. I say, well, that might be a little low because rates have been climbing, and this new group seems to be doing a pretty good job.
Well, and um we, I just, we haven't, we probably will adjust those. Right now, it's real conservative number, um.
I'm okay with the conservative.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with being conservative. I just looked at it and said, well, yeah, that's pretty conservative, I think.
Yeah.
You're looking at the line that goes from like nine hundred and ninety two thousand down to s- s- seven hundred thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Or so you don't know, are you gonna have that same balance invested? You know, that's always a factor too.
Correct. Um. And, I mean, it sounds like the rates will still be good next year, um but we don't know for sure what, what that's gonna look like. Um, and, and I, I was gonna talk more with Kathy on what we should increase those to, if, if, or just leave it there and, and leave it as a conservative number.
Probably not gonna change anything we decide.
It depends on the result of these other two um hearings, personnel and capital. It's all gotta balance.
Yeah. No, but they're, they're, they're very conservative right now.
It's always been amazing to me, property taxes flow through your office, but not all of property taxes.
What, what?
Does the road tax go through? Is that still go through your office? Okay. But sales tax doesn't go through your office. That goes through the auditors, right?
Correct. It gets reseeded into the auditor's fund.
Why?
I don't know.
It just seems like that's a huge amount of money that the treasurer doesn't get to do. Well, you get it. I mean, you get it to invest, but um it's just weird. I don't understand why.
Well, in the, you know, the general fund, the fund that's zero zero one nine nine has all of those funds in it, and when we look at investing for, we call it current expense for the general fund, we take, you know, that as a whole. And so it doesn't really matter what fund that they're reseeded into. It's into what department within the fund. It's all just one fund.
Except you don't spend twenty million dollars.
No.
So, I mean, that, you know.
But our, when, when we're budgeting, our revenues don't match our expenditures.
That's right, that's right.
You know, like other funds outside of the general fund, those, you know.
So, some of them have to balance. That's right, because they're enterprise funds, yeah.
Yes, but um.
Just, it's a weird, a weird anomaly that.
Yeah, and I don't um at the end of the month, when those funds come in to this county from the state, they come into the treasurer's office. And we receipt them all into where they go. And I mean, it's just, you know, always gone to the auditor's fund. And I'm not sure why, but.
Yeah.
How automatic is that? Is that like an ACH transfer into each account, or it's a big transfer into your big account, and then someone has to go through and parcel it out?
Yes, it um all gets reseeded right into our checking account. And then we get a list from the state, and it breaks out all the different revenues that we're receiving. And on this form, it has the bars numbers, so it tells, you know, the bars will tell us um what those, what those funds are for. Um, it's usually the same type of funds that come in every month. And then we do the miscellaneous receipts that receipts it into what department, uh, what fund and department, whether it's county roads or the health department or um the tourism or PFD or whatever it is, we do the miscellaneous receipt to um divvy out all the funds to the different departments.
We get a lot of information from out of the bars also, don't we?
I'm not sure which bars you're referring to.
The bars uh numbers are very handy and helpful if you um wanna know, you know, because on our treasurer's report, there's bars numbers on there, and if you are not quite sure what, what that stands for, you can go look at the bars and.
I've never been fluent in bars. Sorry. It is like a foreign language.
And then, you know, I'm, I, it's all set up that way, um which helps the auditor do the financial statements, and it, you know, all gets rolled in through PeopleSoft, through the bars numbers, and how that, those uh revenues and expenditures get reported.
So when we received the twenty four million dollars in a couple of different, three, in three different batches from the federal government for ARPA and COVID relief, that was not sent to you. That was originally, that was sent to the auditor, wasn't it?
It was sent to the treasurer's office from the state.
Oh.
And we reseeded it in, and if we get new money that we're not sure where it goes, we talk to the auditor or whatever department, or if it's a grant, you know, we we seek advice on what, where should these funds go? Um, when the ARPA money came in, a new fund was created, and those funds were put into the ARPA. When the ARPA money came in, a new fund was created and those funds were put into the ARPA fund.
Oh, so you consulted us, because we created that fund, that's right.
Yeah, and all the funds that get created are by you.
Yeah.
So the, the, in, in this example, the ARPA funds came in, they go into your bank account pool and it's collecting interest from the instant it arrives.
Correct.
So the longer we don't spend it, the more money we make.
Yeah, you're, you're six months too late. We spent most of it.
Have we spent most of it? We've, we've allocated most of it.
We've allocated most of it, that's true, we've allocated most of it.
Yeah, I didn't bring that balance with me, but, um, yeah, it, it hasn't all been spent, it's, it's, it's it's sitting in the fund and it's invested.
Do, it, does what it, this is probably been answered, does what it earned have to be used under ARPA, or does it just go to the general?
Um, I think that's more of a question for Kaylee, but I, I'm pretty sure that the funds, uh, the interest earnings can be, I shouldn't even say, but I think, I think it goes to current expense and it can be.
Yeah, my memory is that it's, it's, uh,
Yeah.
It's up, it's our general fund expenditures. Current expense. Yeah. So when we sell an asset, like there's, we're in negotiations with, um, uh, somebody to buy a portion of the Tenet Way landfill land footprint, we'll get a cash payment, that'll be deposited with you before we can touch it.
Yes, any revenue, any money that any department deposits goes into our account.
Except sales tax.
Sales tax, go. It.
It'll get to you eventually, but it goes.
It all goes into our bank account.
Okay.
All of it comes into our ba, one bank account is where all that money goes. It's divvied out on the treasurer's report by whatever fund and department it belongs to. So if Public Works sells something, they will bring a check, or if it's an ACH or a wire, they'll give us a miscellaneous receipt on where those funds need to be reseeded into. Um, and if it's, if it's a new revenue, we'll work on figuring out what, what's the correct line item that it goes into.
The, the tricky challenge is with, um, restricted funds that we receive, where they have to be spent for certain types of activities and there has to be a paper trail to make sure that it has been commingled with other funds, which is why the Law and Justice Fund seems to be kind of treated so inconse, well, it just makes it more complicated.
Yeah, it had, it has a RCW associated with it and has to be spent in a certain manner, and that's why I'm sure a separate fund was set up for it.
Yeah, and any, any revenue or any expenditure that's paid out of any fund has to bypass through Carolyn's office, the auditor's office.
She checks to make sure.
And they, they, it has to clear all the check marks to, you know, be able to.
I think the behavioral health tax is another one of those, it has to be yeah, only spent for certain things, although we have a lot of discretion on what we spend it on.
Yeah.
And I think probably the document recording fee is the same way, we have to just make sure it's documented that it's, it's, uh, spent on the right things.
Yeah.
And rural public, um, there's the sales tax associated with rural public facilities, it's a, it has a very specific um, intent.
Yep.
So it has its own fund.
And then in, income from timber tax has to be divided out amongst all the, 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 uh, taxing districts, because you shouldn't get a little sliver of it.
Yes, the timber, there's, there's several different kinds of timber tax, we have, uh, DNR Timber Trust one and Trust Two and Other Trust, and then we have the Timber Assessed Value, um, TAV tax.
And that's on privately owned property, right?
No. Um, the, the Timber Trust.
Timber Trust is, yeah, separate.
Yeah, the, uh, DNR manages the land and when they sell the timber, we get the funds for it, but we get reports from DNR and it tells us what taxing district that those, uh, the timbers in, and then the funds get distributed to that taxing district, just as any other taxes would, so we, um, we have a way to calculate by the assess, or by the, um, levy rate for each of those district, you know, whatever districts are within that tax code area, and then we disperse the funds to the districts.
That ends up being important, particularly for school districts who are collecting receipts from timber harvests. Um, if you look at the boundaries of school districts, they are interesting, particularly the Kelso, because they kind of wrap around Castle Rock and Toodle, do this big arc, because they're into timber areas, and it makes it a little bit interesting for if you happen to live in the wrong section of the county, you're got a Castle Rock address, but you're in a Kelso School District, but the closest school in Kelso is a long ways away. I mean, little anomalies like that, but it's all about getting timber revenue, you can't get them to adjust the boundaries very easily.
Well, and that, those, uh, those trust lands, um, I had printed out the ten-year revenue on that, and for Calitz County, um, I mean, if you look back in two thousand fifteen, and this doesn't just come to current expenses, this goes to the districts where these timbers are, we, we had, uh, revenue was four million, in twenty-two, it was thirty-one thousand.
So you know when the harvest was.
Yeah, and, uh, right now, they only have, um, DNR has a hundred thousand dollars contracted out for those timber sales, um, for this year. So those revenues have.
So the county has about eleven thousand acres that DNR manages for us, they were, they were forest lands that we in, not really inherited, but we, we acquired through floor closure in the late nineteen thirties during the depression. And the understanding was if you, if you don't wanna manage them yourselves, DNR will do that. And so they're, you know, they, they designate those various, I think that's the trust two that you're talking about.
Yeah, I think that's what you're talking about, this Timber Trust.
And, and, uh, we actually can, the law does allow us to reconvey that to our control for parks or park purposes.
Hmm.
And that's about the only way we can get it back from, from timberland, but then it's, it's basically withdrawn from revenue production, um, unless we take advantage of a tree farm, you know, as for recreation, but it, it, it is interesting, a lot of it's a lot of details. Right.
Hey? Anything else? Think we're good.
Hi, Emily. Uh-oh. Oh, yeah, you need.
It needs to be someplace. Yeah.
Let's say your name.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Lean into that.
In conjunction with the.
Lean into the microphone, otherwise you can't. You'll tell if you're.
In conjunction with the budget hearings, my only request has to be discussed in executive session, so I just was looking to see if you guys had time today, or if we needed to get it on a schedule for another day. It would be a very short discussion, I think.
So, so is that because of pending, uh, litigation?
Yeah.
Okay.
And short, five, ten minutes?
Max.
So we can do that, executive session, pending legislation.
I do have a commitment at four, so, but.
Four.
We should.
We'll start with five minutes.
Yeah, it should be very short.
Okay.
So we'll head back there.
Okay.
I think we're done with that. Thank you.
Okay, all right, because I don't have it with me.
Kathy, do we need to leave these out for you for next?
Yes, because I'll take them back. Well, the next budgets, the next budget session is next week, I think.
Oh.
I think we have it on the, uh, Kelly, do we have it on the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh, or the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth? Oh, it's in my friend in my book. What are they saying? Yep, so you can keep them if you want, and I'll pick them up. I mean, is there anything you wanna look at? Yeah, you know where to find them, I'm, I'm taking them.
Yeah, that's what I was like, I heard you guys talk about the books, I'm gonna grab them.
That's the same trip as we took once.
Well, it's slightly different. We're starting at, um, Harry Gardner Park.
Okay.
We're going up to Coldwater and possibly onto the landslide at, um, uh, at the Outfall.
How bad is it to say yes, but then not show up?
Actually, there are three, three, uh, activities and you can click the ones that you think you can do. If you can't make it, you can't make it. I mean, that's fine. Let us know, cause.
Well, I'm just, I just don't know ahead of time whether my sciatica is gonna nail me or not. I mean, I can go five miles or I can go a hundred yards. I just don't know a priori.
Well, we are hoping the governor will race us with his presence. I don't know if that's an incentive to go or for you not to go, if the governor goes.
No, that, that would, that would be interesting. Uh, and, uh, is our representative gonna be there also?
Uh, she's not available. She won't be able to go. Although the question is whether we invite the candidates. We did, I mean, we, we tried to last time and got, got, um, Guzan Camp.
Okay. So I haven't, don't think I got the email.
I, I don't think I did either. I will, I will go right now and just send you my, okay, my notice. It'll come from somebody named Kara Whitman.
Okay.
Or maybe.
Farrell Whitman?
Whitman, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we will adjourn. Thanks, Kathy.